At 6:00 PM. Let the record show that we have six of our school board trustees in attendance. We are missing trustee Correa this evening. And we begin to move on to our closed session items. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Solis, second by trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries 6-0. If I can ask Gilbert if we could have 30 seconds for any, if we have any comments from the public on any of the closed session items.
Setting 30 seconds on the clock.
Thank you. The other drink was finished. I had to change very quickly.
Thirty seconds have passed and we have no comments by phone at this time.
Thank you. With that, we will go ahead and move to closed session at 6:02 PM. Thank you. And we'll be back at 7:00.
Good evening, Central Unified Community. We return back for this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees this April 25, 2023. We reconvene in open session and report final actions from closed session with regards to Matter E. 2, the Certified Personnel Report. We had a motion by trustee Mailing, a second by trustee Kerfond. Motion passed 6-0. With regards to Item E. 3, Classified Personnel Report, we had a motion by trustee Cervantes, a second by trustee Mailing. Motion passed 6-0. If I can ask trustee Kerfond to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All rise, please.
Thank you. Can I have Sr. Lazo, Mr. Lazo, come and share a little bit about our community engagement information?
Good evening. If you wish to address the Board, call 559-276-3150 or fill out a request form provided on the table near the entrance and submit it to the clerk of the Board prior to the meeting. If you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, please do so when the item is called. If you wish to speak on an item not on the agenda, you may speak during the public comments section of the agenda. Si desea dirigirse a la Mesa Directiva, llame el número 559 276 31 50 o complete un formulario de solicitud provisto en la mesa cerca de la entrada y preséntelo al secretario de la Mesa Directiva antes de la reunión. Se permitirán comentarios públicos relacionados con los temas de la agenda cuando se llame el tema. Los comentarios públicos sobre un tema que no está en la agenda se permitirán durante la sección de comentarios públicos de la agenda. The District welcomes other language speakers to the Board meetings. Anyone planning to attend and needing an interpreter for a language other than Spanish should call 559-274-4700, extension 10150. By noon on the Friday preceding the Board meeting or at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting, so arrangements can be made for an interpreter. El distrito da la bienvenida a las personas quienes hablan español a las juntas de la Mesa Directiva. Si planea asistir y necesita interpretación, llame al 559 274 4700, extensión 10 150. El bien es antes de la junta y antes del mediodía, o por lo menos 48 horas antes de la junta para poder hacer los arreglos para la interpretación.
Gracias, Sr. Lazo. Next, one of our favorite parts, presentations, student recognition, Dr. Boatwright.
Thank you very much. So tonight, I'd like to start off. We have a student here from Rio Vista, Kaylin Leonard. I'll have her come on up. So Kaylin is receiving recognition for a top selection in the exemplary middle school poem or narrative category for the Young Authors Fair, and she is here tonight to read to us her selection, which is called "The Pair."
Um, do you just want me to start reading it? Okay. A guitarist and a drummer, a perfect pair of sound, the music they create, beautiful and profound. The guitarist jumps his strings, the drummer beats his drums, the music they make together, a beautiful hum. The guitarist plays a solo, the drummer follows along, the music they make together, a beautiful song. The guitarist plays a riff, the drummer adds a beat, the music they make together, a beautiful treat. The guitarist plays a chord, the drummer adds a fill, the music they make together, a beautiful thrill. The guitarist plays a melody, the drummer adds a groove, the music they make together, a beautiful move. The guitarist and drummer, a perfect pair of sound, the music they create, beautiful and profound.
Thank you for that, and just the melodiousness of even of your voice as you read the poem.
Okay, and the next group that I'd like to have come up, first of all, we'll have Principal Dave Holtermann come up. He's going to be introducing you to our California FFA State Degree recipients.
Good evening, President Singh, members of the Board. Superintendent Davis, thank you for allowing
Superintendent Davis, thank you for allowing us to come up here tonight and to highlight one of the most amazing programs and students in our program. I'm gonna, I'm going to read their names, but come on down, students. Central High School, Shining Stars, right there. They earned a state degree, and a state degree means you've done 1,000 hours of service, you've, or $1,000, $1,000 you've earned in your project, 500 hours of service and 25 hours of public service or philanthropy. So they've done a lot of work, and many of these students will go on to the next steps for that National Farmer Degree, the American Degree, and we're looking forward to what that looks like, too. But amazing, we had 16, we have eight here tonight, and I'll read their names for you. We have Ariana, when I read your name, just raise your hand so everybody knows who you are. Ariana Cantu, Jill Di Ambrosio, Davin Hollenquist, Matthew Jordan, Gracie Meiling, Carly Pittman, Trinity Sanchez, and Alyssa Schoeff. Nice work. If you want to come on up, if you want them to come up, come on up that way. Yeah, these are some hardworking, amazing young ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Chair, could we get a group picture before they leave the platform? Don't go away. Congratulations. Congratulations.
There was a request from Trustee Solis for a group picture.
Gilbert, would have him right here.
Thank you again. Can we get another round of applause for our FFA students? The good times continue with Superintendent Davis sharing about some employee recognition.
Absolutely. On this evening's agenda, we have three resolutions and a lot of people in the audience that are representing those resolutions. Upcoming in the month of May is a time where we celebrate classified employees, celebrate all of our educators. The resolutions are attached in today, this very day, and we see some of them back there. We got to celebrate Bus Driver Appreciation Day, and so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Klejian to talk a little bit, and then we want to celebrate you as well. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. The purpose of School Bus Driver Day is to acknowledge the valuable services that each school bus driver provides to students, staff, and schools for Central Unified School District, and to recognize the continued excellence and dedication that the Safe Transportation Department does for all Central Unified students. Central Unified School District and Administration wish to celebrate and honor all of our school bus drivers today, declaring April 25, 2023, School Bus Driver Appreciation Day here in Central Unified School District. Please give our school bus drivers who are present here today a big round of applause. And we'd like to invite you up to the, to the stage to shake hands with our school board members as well. Come on down. Classified. Sure. Okay, we have two more resolutions to honor some more employee groups. I'd like to do both of these together. The next one I'd like to acknowledge is the purpose, is the declaration for Classified School Employee Week for the days connected in the month of May, May 21 through May 27 of 2023. Central Unified School District wishes to celebrate and honor all classified employees by declaring May 21 through 27, the Classified Employee, Employee Week in Central Unified. This year's theme is "Classified Professionals: Indispensable, Inspiring, and Invincible." In addition to that resolution, we also have the resolution on the Board agenda today, declaring May 7 through May 13, Educator Appreciation Week. The purpose of Educator Appreciation Week is to acknowledge the valuable services each educator provides to students, families, and schools in Central Unified, and to recognize their contributions as they provide student learning and the crucial role they play in preparing our students for success in college, career, and community. Central Unified School District wishes to celebrate and honor them. This year's theme for our teachers and educator appreciation week is planting seeds, inspiring students, and future educators. Thank you so much, we appreciate you. Please give them a round of applause as some of them are present in the audience. We'd like to welcome you to stand up and come up to the podium and make your way to the stage and shake some hands with our Board of Trustees. Thank you so much.
We're not going to let you get away. Come on up.
And Mr. Williams with our Central Ag Department. We know you're a teacher, too. Thank you as well.
And with some big announcement, with a great event this weekend, we have our Foundation for Central Schools, Ms. Serena Doherty.
Good evening, and thank you, Board President. Good evening, Board of Trustees. We are very excited. We have our scholarship awards brunch this Saturday. I am very happy to say we are at full capacity. We have sold out. This is the first time that I've experienced that, and we also officially hit $50,000 that we raised this year, which is also a record. We received 104 applicants this year, again, a big number for us, but we narrowed it down to 14 scholarship recipients that we will be honoring on Saturday. I'm not going to say any names yet. So we're very excited for that. We're thankful and humble for just the participation and support our community has given us, along with our donors. I just, I can't be, I'm, I'm full of glee to say. It's been a lot of work, but it's definitely has paid off. This is the seventh year we're honoring Janessa Ramirez, as well as the first year we are honoring and awarding the Nurse Dolores Scholarship, as well as our first Dreamer Scholarship as well. So I hope to see you there. I know some of you have RSVP'd, and those that are not available to attend, we will be creating a recap video and we'll share that on social media. I did want to say thank you to our Highway City Community Development. Those are our friends over at Granville Tea Community Resource Center. We partnered with them on April 1st to host our second annual spring food distribution. Last year, we served around 300 people, and this year, together, we were able to serve 1,466 people. And our families just did not receive boxed items. They received poultry and fresh produce, bread, tortillas, and kid-friendly groceries that they were able to actually make full meals with during spring break. Again, that is thanks to our Central Schools Well-being Grant that we received from Kaiser last year in October, and again, our partnership with April Henry and her team. And a big thank you to our NAMI Club over at Central East for volunteering as well. The other great news that I have to share is that all three of our clothing closets are up and running. So now that's Houghton Kearney, as well as Steinbeck Elementary, and Central East has a career clothing closet. So the Steinbeck and Central East clothing closets officially went up and is fully operating just this month. And within those two schools, we were able to assist 62 students from career-ready clothing to socks, pants, and shirts. And this has just been a great success, thanks to our partnership with the Assistance League of Fresno, as well as our, our fundraising efforts with the Granville Home of Hope. And I'm also happy to announce, we are grant recipient from Macy's Fresno, which will help us in the new school year as well. Last but not least, we do have one more fundraising event before we close out the school year, and that will be on June 3rd. That's our second annual golf tournament. Funds from our golf tournament directly support our textbook grants, which are for our students in the High School Enrichment Program. If you remember, at my last update, I shared some of those stories as to why those textbook grants are important for our students while they attend our local city colleges. So we definitely need support for that, as well as our school club grants, which was new this year, that we were able to award our schools to get them back up and running post-COVID. So we really hope to get your support. All the information is available on our website, centralfoundation.org/donate, as well as information about our next meeting on May 17th. And if you're interested in joining, just shoot me over an email, and I'd be happy to set you up with all the details. And thank you so much for your support. Five and a half more weeks left for the school year, and we're still going strong. So thank you so much.
Next, for our Employee Association highlights, we have Mrs. Laura Bolton, representing Central Unified Teachers Association.
Push, okay, there we go. Now it's on. Hello, good evening, everybody. I just have a couple of quick things to share. So we have an event to recognize and appreciate our educators that Fresno-Madera Service Center is hosting on Saturday, May 13th. We're having a casino night, so that's our big thank you to our educators. So there's lots of games and gift cards that they can win. And then we've also entered testing season in the district, so LPAC, CAST, CAP, AP, PE testing, iReady, end-of-year diagnostics, and probably some other ones that I'm leaving out. But this is the time of year where we take a measure, a snapshot, of all of our hard work that we put in with our students. So we'd like you to please wish our educators and our students luck. Thank you.
And this evening, we don't have a representative from CSEA. Next, we turn to our school highlights, and first up, we have from Soroyan Elementary School, Principal Mills.
Good evening, Board President Singh, members of the Board, Superintendent Davis, our Cabinet, and our audience and guests. My name is Joelle Mills, and I'm the proud principal of Soroyan Elementary, home of the Stallions. At Soroyan Elementary School, we are vested in the guiding principles, and we are focused on our academics, as well as our, meeting our students' social and emotional needs. In looking at our celebrations with our data, we were very pleased to see on the Spring 2023 Panorama Survey that 86% of students reported that they had supportive relationships. In addition, 80% of students also reported that their teachers are respectful to them. We had double-digit iReady growth in math in grades 1 through 6. In the fall, 15% of our students were on or above grade level, as compared to 28% currently. We are very proud of our first and second grade students. 52% of our first grade students and 75% of second grade students are meeting or exceeding the expectations, according to the March Fountas and Pennell Reading Assessment. And finally, we have reclassified 16 of our EL students this school year. The teachers have worked very hard on their focused EL instructional block, as well as small group ELA and math instruction. That's been supported with additional instructional materials purchased. My goal this year was to give teachers buy-in in the resources that were purchased. It's their classroom, and they know their teachers well and the resources that they need. So we did turn that over to the grade levels and let them collaborate so that they could get the materials that they were interested in. Our EL Extension Academy provided over 15 hours of extra instruction for EL students. An upcoming professional development is in partnership with CUSD Instructional Coaches, where we are going to focus on improving our small group instruction that's designed to address a variety of topics for both beginning and veteran teachers. We want to be sure that our professional development is meaningful and purposeful for all of our teachers. And finally, our focused behavior intervention team, that includes our administration, the school psychologist, school counselor, and our thinkery staff, is there to support students' social, emotional needs. This team has worked very hard this year to put things in place, to help students with their emotional regulation, which was something that was indicated that we needed to work on, according to our Panorama Survey last year. As far as our challenges, we are looking to raise our overall student proficiency at Soroyan Elementary School by 15% in both ELA and math, as measured by our iReady Benchmark Assessment. One of the biggest things that we do need to work on in order to achieve this goal is we need to decrease our chronic absenteeism rate by at least is we need to decrease our chronic absenteeism rate by at least 10%. Kids can't learn if they're not in school. So we are currently working with our counselor and our behavior interventionists and our parents to ensure that they are aware of the importance of being in school. We have, we are in the works of starting our Rise and Shine Club, so we will have students who need a little bit of help getting into school, check in with our counselor. And that seems to be working really well so far, along with some other attendance incentives. We are looking to increase the rigor of our instruction, as well as our students' stamina to work independently. One of the observations that we made last year, as our administration team observed in the beginning of this year, was that we needed to definitely boost our students' confidence and ensure that they have the stamina to work independently, problem-solve, and think critically on their own. We're going to purposely show students the relevance of instruction and tasks, so that they have buy-in and are engaged. We want to continue to build positive and supportive relationships with students and families. And finally, we want to increase our student-to-student academic discourse. We want our students to talk to each other, explain their thinking, and collaborate. We focus on our Triple RS Behavior Expectations. Our students are respectful, responsible, ready, and safe. And going into next year, we want to work on our academic Triple RS, which is rigor, relevance, building relationships, and leading into higher student success. For our spotlight, we are, in coming back from COVID and just in building our community, we want to increase our parent and family involvement, our community connections, and our school pride. We have a cheer team this year that really has gone out, gone above and beyond. First day of school, they were out there cheering the kids in, and they're out there, you know, every so often, and they're at our games. And so they've really brought a lot of school spirit. Lots of community events with our Parent Faculty Club, including a community ice cream social, grandparents' breakfast, movie night, pastries with a loved one. We also had a winter dance. Literacy workshops were conducted for parents and guardians, and that was based on feedback from a survey of what they wanted to learn about. And that was in conjunction with our ELAT Committee, and we have an upcoming spring carnival. For our PBIS Award Days, we had four teacher-led reward days and four administration-led reward days. The last one being a glow dance party, which was a lot of fun. And we were very pleased to see that most of the students in the school earned it. So we had a good time, and our site-based tech is actually a DJ on the side, so he DJed for us. And so it was a lot of fun. So that was great to see the kids smiling and enjoying themselves. For student incentives, we always want to focus on the positive. So we have positive office referrals, which can be made by any staff member at any time. When they want to recognize students for doing something special, the students will come up to the office, we fill it out, we give them a certificate, and we take their picture and then we send that home with their parents. We have our weekly stallion ticket drawings. We recognize our stallion of the month, which is focused on one of our Triple RS Expectations. So we have our big one coming up at the end of the year, where the students, two students from each class will be recognized for exemplifying all of our Triple RS standards. We have academic achievement awards. We've partnered with community businesses, and they've given us certificates to award the students with for behavior, academics. And sometimes we, it's just a kid who might need a good pick-me-up, or has been doing a really good job, you know, coming to school on time. And then we have our spirit days. Lots of dress-up days. We had a great Read Across America Week. The teachers did a great job planning. And so just keeping those kids engaged and our community engaged, that's what we're looking forward to next year as well.
Thank you so much, Principal Mills. Questions from the Board? Very excited to hear about the grandparents' breakfast. Would love to just hear how that went. And I guess another question I just had, Principal Mills, what have been some of the things that you've put in place, especially that increasing students' stamina? I think that's, I mean, obviously something all of our schools could sort of benefit from. I would just love to hear some of the steps that you all have put in place at Sorion.
The grandparents' breakfast, I'll start with that. It's a great longstanding tradition. We had a lot of engagement. Lots of grandparents showed up. And then we're grateful to Larson Brothers Photography, because they came out and took pictures. And then the grandparents have those as well, and then, so they do attend our parent events. As far as students' stamina, I think that's something that we've been working on for quite a while, even before COVID. And it just really is knowing that it's okay to ask a question and for students to have some time to think. So we like to call that productive struggle, where, you know, letting them have that thing-time to really critically think. And that's where we are trying to pull in that student-to-student discourse, so that the students have time to talk with each other. And then, of course, there's teacher-led discourse as well. But just building up that confidence and letting them know that they can do it. And that sometimes things are hard, but building in that growth mindset of, I can't do it yet. I'll get there, and just reminding them what they are good at. And we've seen a really good increase, especially from last year. Coming in and just, we have a lot of great veteran teachers who, they just know how to interact with the kids. They know the families. That's great to see. And we hired some really great new teachers as well. And so they've just had great mentors at the school that have worked with them. And so lots of professional development on accountable talk and getting students to respond to each other, and just slowly building up that time for kids to work.
Thank you, and kudos to the team. I mean, just to see that math increase, that double-digit from, from spring to fall. Obviously, we're not where we want to be, but that is huge progress in that direction. So thank you to you and your team for, for, for all the hard work that it took to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, question, trustee Cervantes.
I don't have any questions, just a couple of comments. Thank you, Board Chair. First, I just want to recognize, obviously, your success, and obviously, you're embracing your challenges. That's a great leadership. But with that, I just wanted to mention this one thing about the positive office referrals. So often, we hear about the negative referrals, right? But you're embracing the positive part, and hopefully, that's becoming infectious on your campus. But great job of being very creative to take some positive things that are happening, because there's a lot of positive things happening on our campuses. But so we often focus on all the negative things. So thank you for bringing light tonight.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you for the opportunity to showcase the school and the hard work that all of the teachers and staff put forward, and all of our students as well. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Principal Mills, and the whole team at Sorion. Next, we'd like to invite Principal Diaz from Roosevelt Elementary School to share what's going on there.
Good evening, Board President Singh, Superintendent Davis, and members of the Board. My name is Ross Diaz, and I am the new principal. An honor to work with an amazing staff at Roosevelt and here today to share with you all the great things that we are doing. In celebration, here is our data and progress we have made. 25.4% of our student population are English learners. 12 students have been reclassified this year already. Eight more students are projected to be reclassified pending LPAC. Summit of assessment results, 45% of our EL students are making progress towards English language proficiency on the LPAC assessment. Progress, school-wide, we have had an 8% increase in reading, 6% increase in math. In our subgroups, we've had a 6% increase in reading for special education students, 5% increase in reading for our English learners, and a 5% increase in math for our English learners. Here is what we are doing. We have full-time ELD teacher. We are pushing in our reading intervention to support our primary grades. Teachers are working collaboratively in PLCs focused on the needs of our students. 100% implementation of designated ELD weekly, goal-setting with all English learners. Intentional planning on grade-level instruction with built-in scaffolds and supports for all learners, and acknowledging the hard work from our teachers and instructional aides working with our students. Our challenge, coming in, being new principal, I understand 5.2% of our suspension rate, but we have had a decrease since the fall and are projecting a 26% decrease in suspension rate from last year at this time. Here's some of the work that we have done as a team at Roosevelt. Implementation of our PBIS handbook, working collaboratively with our team and having representation from every grade level. Support service team working together to meet the social and emotional needs of our students. We're focusing on restorative practice in conflict resolution with our students. Weekly second-step lessons and differentiated lessons based on student need, and recognizing that some of the things that we have in, in kinder through second grade are a lot different than the things that we have third through sixth. Increase in school-wide incentives celebrating positive behavior. New playground equipment to engage students and connecting students' families with additional tiered services, as you can see in the pictures. As we continue to promote those positive incentives for the kids, they love being on our PBIS wall that we update monthly. For our spotlight, I would like to talk to you about activities that we've done to connect our students to school. Student academics, our students had the opportunity to attend the Wonder Valley trip. Also connecting with our expanded, expanded learning program. Our students have had opportunities to engage in community events, and then also taking a trip to Cal Poly, Monterey, and Alcatraz, preparing our students for a college career. Our athletics, wrestling Division II champions. Our cheer team plays Superior at the Showcase. In our community events, meet and greet, we had, we had a meet and greet here at the T Community Center, and it was, it was a great turnout. So we've been getting feedback from the parents, and it's something that we want to continue for next year, and also looking into having something in the fall and something in the spring for our families. Movie night, trunk-or-treat, our winter, winter program, our art night, and our spring carnival. Our goal at Roosevelt is to continue to build our connection with our students to school and also do ordinary things in an extraordinary way. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Principal Diaz. I open it to my fellow trustee members if any questions, concerns, or comments.
Comment and question. So you're pretty successful in lowering the suspension rate. How are you doing that?
Working with our team, working with our team and really taking a look at every student when things come in and into the office. You know, if it's a restorative practice, something that we could work with the kids, right? If something happens out on the, on the playground, or if something happens in class, really taking a look and seeing how we can work that out with the students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to appreciate you, Principal Diaz. I've had a chance to hear from different parents and really like families and students in, at the school. And I think many have commended you, just in terms of creating like sort of greater stability, having a large, much larger presence. And in some ways, that's indicative, just in terms of your own staff and team members that have joined us tonight in terms of really appreciating your leadership.
That was a great surprise, and I am so excited.
But, but I, but I think it's, you know, obviously, I'm confident we're going to see the numbers tick mark that. But it first starts with the leadership and having buy-in and support from, from the staff. And so I'm really excited about the way things are going at Roosevelt and what, just, just a kind of a buzz when I hear from the parents and students that, that something is different happening. And I really want to commend you and the entire team for, for really kind of being part of that and helping the parents and the families really believe that Roosevelt is the place to be.
Thank you. No, we're so excited. We have a great team, and we've been working together and really building that culture, and really bringing back, I think, hearing the feedback from our families. There's a lot of rich tradition at Roosevelt, and we want to bring it back and take it to the next level.
Congratulations. So you have that much support from your staff. I just wonder what it's like from your students and your families. So that in itself speaks a volume of what you're doing over there. So it must be working. I see every one of your staff members smiling. It's not a fake smile. It's a very infectious smile. It's, they're excited. And obviously, there's some really good things happening there. We're grateful for that. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. You guys enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you. Next, we turn to our reports, and we get to receive information on Cal Kids from Ms. Pennington.
All right. Good evening, Board President Singh, Superintendent Davis, and members of the Board. I'm Christine Pennington, area administrator, and I'm going to be sharing with you this evening about California Kids Investment and Development Savings Program, also known as Cal Kids. So Cal Kids is a state-funded college savings account program for kids. College savings accounts are created with startup funds for low-income children born in California and also for our low-income and English learner students. So this is an opportunity that our students have, and these, these college funds have already been created for our students. So the goal of Cal Kids is to expand access to college, especially for our low-income and English learner students. And research indicates that children with a college savings account are three times more likely to enroll in college and four times more likely to graduate than students with no college savings account. So that is where the research and where this all came out of, is the goal to really help some of our, our students that come from low income as a state to be able to go to college. So there are two groups of children who will have accounts. There are low-income newborn students in California born on or after July 22nd, and that information is based on the Health Department information, California Health Department. And then, beginning in the 2021, 2022 school year, low-income English learner students in first through 12th grade also have an account created in their name, and this is based on the Local Controlled Funding Formula. And that is where that information's received from. Also, each year, incoming first-grade English learners and low-income students will have accounts created as well. And then for, for newborns, the automatic initial deposit will be $25. And then you can see up there, there's additional added for parents who visit the ScholarShares529.com. And then also for those parents who open and link a ScholarShare529 account. So it's something that's created for newborns. That the parents, once they link it, they're able to add funds, and then, of course, those, those funds grow over time. And then for our school-age students, there is an initial deposit of $500 plus an additional 500 deposit for our foster students, and then another 500 deposit for our homeless students. So that's $1,500 that students would be able to access. And so that, that, those funds are already out there in accounts for these students. And then students can start using these funds at the age of 17. So our seniors this year and seniors from last year have accounts created in their names. And once students turn 17, they can use the accounts, and they have until the age of 26 to use these funds. Students can use the money for higher education expenses. We know how expensive college can be, and so these funds are very, very important for our students. So here's what we're doing, because the very important part of this is making sure that students and families are aware of the funds that are available to them, and that's, that's where the work is. So we're working to get the word out to our families and students. There was an informational flyer sent out district-wide in September, this last September. We are also sending another flyer out in May through Parents Square. And then we are working to increase the number of posters that are available, that are at sites, that are promoting this program. There will also be information going out district-wide in our next edition of Central Live. Of course, thanks to our wonderful Gilbert Maggion. And then we are going to be continuing to send out information to our families each year. So the importance of getting that word out is just because the students do have until they're 26 to use the fund, so we want to make sure that they know that they're out there for them. And so with that, I want to thank you, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Pennington. Questions, comments from the Board? Trustee Cervantes.
Thank you, Board Chair. First and foremost, where were you when my kids were in school? What a great program. Thank you for discovering this. I don't really have any questions. I predominantly just want to say thank you. I think this is amazing. predominantly just want to say thank you. I think this is amazing. And I think the faster we get this out, the more people we'll be able to affect. And this is a way of empowering people. And it doesn't take a lot if you start saving early. And thank you so much for bringing this to us.
Yeah. And thank you to Board President Singh for asking for this information.
I mean, all of you.
Trustee Kerfan.
Thank you, President Singh. I think this is a great program as well. Every dollar helps when it comes to your college education. And for any students out there that are considering this and think, oh, that's not that much, not going to cover everything, it will be the difference between textbooks for a year or having to pay that out of pocket, which makes a huge impact on yourself, your education, and your mental health. I do have one question for the benefit of the public, because it benefits those who are low-income. How are we determining low-income for the eligibility? Like, is there an income threshold?
So the way that it's determined is based on the local control funding formula. And I don't know about as far as like what the threshold is, but I know for our district, that's identified through our free and reduced lunch numbers. And then the Health Department is for the newborns where it's identified.
Okay. So any student who is on free or reduced lunch is eligible for this program?
I don't know about reduced, but that's where the identification comes from. So...
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
And just to provide a bit of additional context, if you go to the website, you can actually check your account. I guess, two questions, Ms. Pennington. One is, I know certain school districts like Fresno Unified is really working to, at sort of orientation in the fall to really sort of like spotlight and highlight that. So I'd wonder if that'd be something that we could make sure that we could do. They're moving to a system of sort of, even though the state has an automatic enroll-in, but making sure parents are aware that there's an automatic enroll-in as opposed to an opt-in. And another point I just wanted to ask if you could kind of underscore again. I know you shared that in May and June of this year, we will be reaching out to the seniors that graduated last year who may, so that means for the class of 2022, you may have $500 or plus sitting in an account that you may or may not be aware of. What are the different ways that we're expecting to make sure that our last-year graduating class is aware of that? What are the different ways we're thinking of reaching out to them? And really, you know, just kind of brainstorming even things that we could make sure that our upcoming class of 2023 is aware. And hopefully this provides an additional incentive, whether they're going to City College, whether they're going to a career technical education program, whether they're going to a university that, yeah, that they may have $500-plus sitting in account already for them.
Well, great questions. I think that's a wonderful idea in the fall to have some sort of an event where we invite families. We can definitely look into that and see how that's possible. As far as our previous students, there are some challenges with that because they're no longer in the system in order to provide those parent squares. But what we're looking at is sending out something from Central Unified that goes through the mail to let them know about that. The state of California does send out the information, but you know, I can imagine at times you get something in the mail and we question, right? Is this real? There's, you know? And so I think something that comes from the school district would be something that they, that would help them to understand that this is something that's available to them. And then our current seniors, we do have our career counselors that are sharing the word on this as well out to all of our current seniors so that they're aware of what's available to them as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You bet. Thank you.
Our next presentation will come from Dr. Boatwright, where we will receive a report on the school climate survey, the Panorama survey.
Thank you so much. And the presentation is coming up right now. There's a little bit of a delay. And there it is. Okay. So tonight, I am bringing to you information on our school climate survey results. And Panorama is the survey tool that we use. And you may recall that at the last board meeting, I did bring you just some general information on Panorama. And so tonight, I want to actually bring you more specific information for our students and our families and our staff. So this is a document that you've seen many times already this year. These are the current LCAP goals. Goal three is about having safe and inclusive schools, including family education and engagement. As part of the LCAP process, we are required to address state and local priorities in the LCAP plan. Priority six of the LCAP plan does require us to measure and address school climate. As mentioned earlier, goal three focuses on safe and inclusive schools. We use the Panorama survey to measure climate and perception of school safety from our students and our staff and also our families. You can see survey completion rates for students, staff, and families on this slide. The Panorama survey is administered to all students in grades five, seven, nine, and 11. However, the survey can be completed by all families and staff connected to their school sites. There was a technology glitch that impacted the Biola adult surveys, and so those are being re-administered at this time. And so when we do have that information, I can provide that to you in the Friday report. So the survey gathers information from students about how they feel when they're at school. Student perceptions correlate with how well they are learning. This slide provides information on how students responded to the feedback survey. Notice the two slides of this report. There's one side that is for third and fifth grade students, and then the right side of the reports are for our seventh, ninth, and 11th grade students. Responses from elementary students do trend more favorably than secondary. School safety for all students measured favorably with 50% or higher. This slide provides information on how students responded to the social-emotional survey. These survey questions focused on students' feelings about their own growth mindset and ability to regulate their emotions. Both groups of students scored very high with 88% and 81% in favor of having supportive relationships at school. The Panorama teacher and staff survey perceptions of their professional well-being. Questions are asked to determine how staff feel about their ability to support the academic, social, and emotional learning of their students. Questions are also asked about school climate and culture and relationships with their colleagues, families, and also school leadership. This report shows you the perceptions of our support staff. Although there was a slight drop in favorable responses, support staff still responded positively to questions about relationships with their site leaders. Now similarly to the last slide, this report provides information on teachers' perception. 77% of teachers responded favorably to questions about relationships with site leaders. They also had a strong sense of efficacy in their ability to educate and to meet the academic needs of their students. We know that when schools successfully engage families, then students are more likely to succeed academically, develop and maintain better social skills, and are more likely to graduate. To ensure support for families that may have needed it completing this survey, school sites sent out many messages offering support. Our liaisons contacted families and offered support. Chromebooks were set up at school sites for parents to use, and also time was provided during parent meetings for parents to complete the Panorama This final report that I would like to share with you this evening provides information on how families responded to the survey questions. 80% responded favorably to the questions about the barriers to engagement, meaning that they feel as though barriers are not a concern. 74% of families also feel as though the school is meeting the needs of their students. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Boatwright. Questions, comments, or concerns from the board? Trustee Kerfan.
Thank you, President Singh. I was wondering if we have any insight as to why, as far as student feedback, we see less of a positive interaction of the survey for grades six through 12 than we do three through five?
Right. So what we generally see in these surveys, we see trends where our upper-grade students, our middle school and our high school students, they just have a different perception about some of these items at their school site. We do have a lot of support staff available and working with our students. It's very important to us that even though they may not feel as favorably about relationships with their teachers or school safety, that's still a heightened concern for us and something that we do continue to strive to improve.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Boatwright, I just want to clarify. So the results that you're showing are from the spring of 2023 or the, or fall 2022?
They are from the spring.
Okay. Perfect. And I know last time we discussed this, we said we would be able to possibly get the individual school site data. Would that be sort of provided at a later time or would that be as an attachment to us later?
So we have all of the school reports in a folder for you, and Mrs. Davis will be sharing that with you so that you'll have that folder. And just remember that the Biola for the adult surveys, those are being rerun right now. And so you won't see the Biola family survey in the report, or I'm sorry, in the folder, but we'll be putting that in as soon as those are available.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Next, we open it to Superintendent Board Communications. First turn to Superintendent Davis. I know Trustee Kerfan wish to make a comment as well.
All right. I'll try to move quickly through these. I want to reiterate what Ms. Bolton said earlier. This is our season that a lot of our students are engaged in different tests. So if you have neighbors that are students, if you have your own students, getting them to school on time, giving them extra snacks, they do stress out over these things. They know they matter. And if you are married to a teacher or are friends with teachers, give them a snack. They also know that they stress out about these things too, because we really care about how our students are doing on them. And so busy season for sure. So we wish them great success. This week, our induction program was formally reviewed. An induction is the program a new teacher enters into as soon as they are hired to clear their credential. The California Teacher Credentialing Program does a review of our entire program to make sure that we are meeting all program standards. We received great feedback in terms of the program. The reviewing team made comments about coming to visit this district and seeing some of the work in progress and also are reiterating the success they are anticipating seeing. So we got some really great information from them this evening and some good feedback on some next steps for us. And I want to thank Janine Warland, the mentors, the teachers that are involved, who take two years to go through the process to get their credential. There's a lot of work that gets involved in that. So great success on that. Central High School, you may have seen in social media, last week Central High was visited by a representative from the Law and Public Safety Education Network and awarded their criminology pathway with a five-year national accreditation. So congratulations, Principal Holdman. I see you in the back there. And to the team for the incredible work, Jesse Rodriguez and his team. FCCLA, so there is a state leadership conference for all of our students that are involved in the family services pathway. And they are at a conference right now. We got word that from our East Campus team that our Central Chapter received Gold Level State Superior, which is the top award you can get, and they will be moving on to Nationals. Their advisor, Alyssa Feit, also received a few recognitions, Master Advisor Award, Gold Level Outstanding Advisor, and Advisor to State Officer. Pretty incredible news on that front. This Thursday, City of Fresno will be recognizing some of our Central East French students at City Hall. The City of Fresno has a sister city partnership, and our students will be there to be recognized and serve as ambassadors. Almost to the end of some announcements. It was a pretty busy season right now. Today, we did, we've been talking about the bond sales going on. Today, we were able to lock in the interest rate for the remaining 45 million of the GO bonds from our last election. Apparently, the market interest was great today and not so great last week. So it was a good time for us to be doing this. And compared to the presentations you've had in the past on what was projected and what was projected when going out to voters for the Measure D, the rates came in 20 million less than was projected. So for our taxpayers, that's a great thing. And for us, it's a great thing for the funds we need for our projects. My community meetings have been incredibly insightful and it's been fun to meet all of our families. One common thread that has come up is with regard to safety out in our community and specifically traffic safety. And it's a topic around our valley. And so we're going to be doing some work. And I would love to also share with you that anytime you're out and about around schools, if you see any issues in road, road improvement, signage, crosswalk repair. I know Jesse's already input every single campus need for signage and crosswalk repair. Everything goes through the Fresno App for our city and the Fresno County Connect app for our county streets. So you'll see some communication coming out on that. It is a very high topic of interest for our families. And so we'll do our part and want to get the word out as well for others to make sure they're using the system as well. We do call also, but apparently this gets there faster. So we'll call and add it here. Those are all the updates for me. Thank you for letting me give you a lengthy report this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. Trustee Kerfan?
President Singh, it's actually more of a comment on Consent Agenda Item M3. So I think it might be more appropriate for at that point, Consent Agenda.
No, now would be the time because if we're going to pull the item or if you wanted to comment on the item.
Thank you. So I'm very excited for Educator Appreciation Week. I started off my career as an intern with the NEA, so got to be there for Educator Appreciation Week. What I was informed of today is actually the CTA, so our California Teachers Chapter, they celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week the week of May 1st through May 5th, so next week. I was wondering if it's not too late for us to amend this item to keep it in line with our California teachers?
My only suggestion on that would be maybe we do both. One, because educator being sort of a larger kind of framework and of course, for us to highlight our teachers as well, but maybe it's for us to do both. So that we're inclusive of all of our different groups.
I was informed it's kind of interchangeable, but whatever works if we want to...
Well, I'm just thinking in terms of our, for instance, educator does tend to be a bit broader than only the classroom teachers. So hence why maybe that's, yeah, please do.
If I can add to that, we do always come up with when social media starts announcing both a California Day of the Teacher and then what is our week and which week are we celebrating? The discussion of past was to make sure that we used a more inclusive week, that a lot more of the unique days fit into, to make sure our speech therapists, our psychologists, our nurses, all of our certificated staff, including our teachers, kind of fit into a week. And so that was the reason it was there. I love your interest in making sure that we celebrate them. I think that's important, whichever way you want to do it. I just, I think it was helpful if I could share why we had picked the National Week for the resolution.
Right. Thank you. And that does clarify it. Obviously, we want to be inclusive to all of our educators. I just wasn't sure because I know there was a split between national and state. So thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, we can, definitely before our next meeting, we can possibly have both come Trustee Solis?
Also a comment and some, I guess, instruction for the superintendent or committee that's meeting with the city. Can you bring up the issue of the sidewalk along the south side of Dakota, Dakota and Cornelia, where I'm very appreciative of the light that was recently put in? We've been talking about the sidewalk for two years now. I'd like to sort of make that a priority. We're having more and more kids walk that area now, and it is creating somewhat of a traffic... a traffic issue.
And just two quick announcements. I had an opportunity to join the District Three Town Hall at Tilly Elementary earlier this month along with Trustee Kurfan. A number of our community members definitely shared some concerns about safety with regards to our buses. Those, and just for the community members that may be watching, have definitely been communicated to Superintendent Davis and her team, as well as the need for more crosswalks in front of some of our school. Superintendent Davis is on a committee with a number of different school districts that work closely with the City of Fresno and even some joint efforts even at times with the County of Fresno. So just want to say that we're very loud and clear, hearing your concerns and trying to move them at the speed of city, if you understand what that means. And another quick announcement, so tomorrow, very excited, Justin Garza High School, we are doing a first-ever, I think maybe in California, a Punjabi language town hall to engage some of our Punjabi-speaking parents. That will be tomorrow evening at 5:30 PM at Justin Garza High School. And with that, if there are no other comments or communications from the Board or the Superintendent, we move on to Item L, Comments from the Public. And this is an opportunity for any members of the public that's maybe in the audience or maybe watching it on Zoom to share any comments about items that are not on today's agenda. And with that, Gilbert, I'll ask you to put 30 seconds as well.
Setting 30 seconds on the clock. 30 seconds have passed, and we have no comments by phone at this time.
Thank you. Next, we move on to our Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Trustee Solis, a second by Trustee Cervantes. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Consent Agenda motion carries 6-0. Next, we move on to our action items. First, we have Student Discipline Case 2223013. Motion carried, sorry, just seeing, motion carried six, sorry, no, I'm announcing this. Yes, can I take a vote for number 222303?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Trustee Solis.
Second.
A second by Trustee Mailink. Those approving the recommendation, please say aye.
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 Those opposing, please say nay. Those abstaining? Recommendation carries 6-0.
President Singh, did that include the, any amendments?
I think we, it wasn't necessarily an amendment. I think we just kind of gave a note for us, a direction to staff in terms of how we'd like it to appear again.
I see. Thank you.
Next, we move to Case Number 2223014. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Trustee Solis.
Second.
We have a, second by Trustee Mailink. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Recommendation carries 6-0. Next, we move to Item Number Two, Accept Gifts to the District. Mr. Collegian.
Thank you, Trustee Singh. The following gifts to the district are attached for your review. We have two on the board agenda for review tonight. The first one is for Central High School. They received a donation of $200 from the Culture Arts Rotary. And the second one for Justin Garza High School, donation by Party for Cynthia Labor for a 24-foot balloon garland for girls soccer valued at $440. Administration is recommending acceptance of gifts. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Trustee Mailink, a second by Trustee Kurfan. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries 6-0, and thank you for the generosity of those making gifts to our district. Next, we move on to Item Number Three, Approve Revised Board Policies. Dr. Boatwright and Mr. Collegian.
Thank you. So this item is returning tonight for approval. Suggestions that were made during the last meeting have been added, and so once again, we are recommending this item be approved.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Trustee Sellers, second by Trustee Cervantes. Those in, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. Item Number Four, Approve the Bid Regarding Justin Garza High School Interim Portables Bid Schedule and Award.
Thank you, Board President, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis. This item is returning to you tonight for consideration to approve the bid award for the Justin Garza High School Interim Portables to DH Williams Construction Incorporated. DH Williams Construction is located in Fresno and specializes in construction of educational facilities. Mr. Dave Williams has been in business for over 40 years. In your packet, we have attached the bid summary for your review, and administration is recommending approval of this item, and I'll be, will make myself available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or concerns from the board? Trustee Sellers.
Is there a date set that we can expect delivery of the portables?
Yes, it's going to be, don't have that information with me at this time. However, I do remember it was June, it was like the last week of June.
Okay, and we're still on track with that.
Yeah, I can zero in, well, yeah, I can zero in on that, on that date, give you a definitive date, but I believe it was the last week of June.
All right, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Trustee Solis, second by Trustee Cervantes. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, those opposed, please say nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Next, we move on to Item Number Five, Approve Bond Oversight Committee Membership Nomination. Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Board President, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis. For your consideration tonight, we have Bond Oversight Committee Membership nominations to fill vacancies that currently exist on our committee. We would be eager to work with participating members appointed by the Board of Trustees. Administration is recommending that the board appoint two members to fill those vacancies, and I will make myself available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Ms. Birk, B-I-R-K, and Mr. Lantis, L-A-N-T-I-S.
We have a, we have a motion by Trustee Solis of approving Mr. Burke and Mr. Landis, and a second by Trustee Cervantes.
President Singh, moment for comment on the motion before we vote for it?
Sure.
I think we'd be making a mistake to not include candidate Terry Cox. As you see on their form, they have solid references, mayor of City Fresno, member of the Assembly, and they're, they have a lot of experience with Centrified, with our system, including being a previous board member.
Let's, we'll vote on the motion, and then we'll move if, depending on the result. Those in favor of the motion by Trustee Solis and second by Trustee Cervantes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries 5-1. Item Number Six, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Item Number Six, Approve District Office Portables Furniture Purchase. Mr. Rodriguez. We still have you up here. Almost.
Thought I had one more before that, but for your consideration tonight is the Meteor Education Furniture Proposal for the District Office Portable Project, where fiscal services will be relocated. The furniture is needed to provide modernized workstations for staff to help increase efficiency and productivity. Administration is recommending approval of this item, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, comments, or concerns from the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Trustee Solis.
Second.
Second by Trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries 6-0. Item Number Seven, Ratify Field Trip. Ms. Bergman.
Well, good evening, President Chan, Superintendent Davis, and Board of Trustees. This evening, as you're aware, excuse me, requests for overnight field trips, as you're aware, require board approval. This evening, I have an overnight field trip needing ratification. The Theater Arts Department at Central High, East High School has a longstanding annual tradition of participating in a team-building event and an acting workshop up at Shaver Lake. This year, due to challenges with editing, the trip missed the calendar for consent items. Administration is recommending the board ratify this item, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments or concerns from the board? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Trustee Solis, and was it a second by Trustee Kurfan? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number Eight, Approve April's Quarterly Williams Uniform Complaint Procedure.
Good evening, President Singh, Trustees, Superintendent Davis. Tonight, we will hold a public hearing to approve the Williams Complaint Procedure. Principals and departments have compiled this information for the quarterly report. One facility's complaint was filed within one of our school sites during this quarter. As you can see in the attachments, that the issue was resolved after Mr. Collegian's investigation. Administration is recommending the board hold a public hearing at this time and approve the Williams Uniform Complaint Procedure. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Horstman. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the board? Trustee Kurfan?
Thank you, President Singh. So I see on one of the complaints that there's, every time it rains, there's a leak. We've had quite a rainy season. Has there, do there continue to be leaks with the mentioned area?
I could take that, Mr. Horstman. In working in collaboration with our maintenance department, Trustee Kurfan, the leak has, where the issue was on the roof, has been repaired.
Got it. Thank you. Second.
Next, we have to actually open it up to the public.
Setting 30 seconds on the clock.
Oh, looks like we also have a member of the public.
Okay, so I was the one that filed it, and I work at the site. And it has rained twice and leaked twice since the first time the repair was done after I filed the Williams complaint. So it has stopped raining, so I don't really know if it's fixed, but it has, I have spoken to the facilities guys, and they told me that it could be coming from lots of different places because of where it's leaking. It's a low point, so they actually think that it may have been multiple leaks over the years that just keep leaking through at this one spot. So they told me that there was going to be roofers coming out to continue to work on it and that they were getting a quote for additional roofing repairs. So I don't actually know or believe necessarily until I see it rain again real hard that it is fixed, because it's been fixed a lot of times, which is why I finally filed the Williams complaint, because we had work orders for many years in a row for that same exact spot, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Trustee Kurfan?
Thank you. So before we motion approve, have roofers gone out there to the site yet?
Yeah, actually, before we address it, Mr. Bot, let's just finish up in the public hearing, if there are any other comments or concerns from anyone in the audience, or if you could put 30 seconds, Gilbert, for anybody that may want to call in from home.
Would you like me to do an additional 30 seconds?
Oh, you've, the original 30 seconds has already expired?
Yes, but I can do it again. We had our comment from the public. I apologize.
Let's go ahead and reset it.
All right.
That's fine.
30 seconds have passed, and we have no comments by phone at this time.
Thank you. Then with that, we will close the public comment session. And Mr. Bot, if you'd like to address Trustee Kurfan's question.
Good evening. Yeah, so we did have a roofing company go out there to look at the situation. Like Ms. Bolton stated earlier, it is a lower spot where the roofs are pitched, and so everything kind of comes down there, and there's walls, parapet walls, where we were trying to locate the leak. The roofer did go out there, located what he thought was also the leak. That was what it was addressed. The, there's multiple issues there, where we've had failures with the previous penetrations that were there multiple years ago, PVC just cracking. Due to the age of the building, we are now looking at what we can do to do a major repair. I'm working with facilities with Mr. Rodriguez to provide him information, so if we need to get that under permanent maintenance, we can.
Thank you. And do we have a timeline for those major repairs?
We're still gathering all the information by also doing more of a district-wide roofing assessment to see exactly where everything is, so we're not chasing, but we're getting all that information together to come up with a good plan.
Thank you. And there's also mention of a soggy ceiling tile leftover. Has the tile been replaced?
Tile's been replaced. We've always given the direction, if we have a soggy tile, take care of it right there. The unfortunate part is during the rain, and especially the rain we did get, you know, you could take care of one, another could pop up, and even there could be just residual water just keep dripping, so we want to take care of those tiles as soon as possible, so yes.
All right, thank you. If there are other questions.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Trustee Solis. Do I have a second? Second by Trustee Cervantes. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. Next, Approve New Vehicle for Ag Department. Mr. Bot.
Good evening, Board President Singh, Board Members, and Superintendent Davis. This evening, the item comes to you. Central High School's Ag Department was awarded the Career Technical Education Incentive Grant through the CD to purchase a vehicle. The vehicle is needed to help transport students to a variety of school-related trips. The vehicle that would fit the department's needs is a Ford Expedition. The vehicle has a capacity of eight passengers. Enterprise Fleet Management Services was previously board-approved to procure vehicles through a lease-to-own method. Staff has verified that this procurement method will be approved through the grant administrator. There will be a one-time payment of approximately $65,898.39 and a monthly payment of approximately $59.25 for a maintenance package that is on all of our leases that cover the vehicle for the term of the 60-month lease. Administration is recommending that the board approve this vehicle after the board has any questions that I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bot. Questions or concerns or comments from the board?
I'm sorry, I read our items before, but could you please reiterate why leasing is? I'm sorry, I, I read our items before, but could you please reiterate why leasing is our go-to decision and not our purchasing?
Yeah, so back in February of 2020, we brought Enterprise Fleet Services forward for previous purchases, and so that is the method we are going forward with. This is a little bit of a special situation because it is a grant. Typically, though, we do this method, so we have a lower capital outlay upfront, and we're able to spread out the cost of it over the five years, and then also have a maintenance package that covers majority of everything that could go wrong with the vehicle for five years, including routine maintenance at, you know, I'm trying to remember, but it was about ten shops within about a five-mile radius of Shaw and Polk area.
And after those five years, we'll be able to purchase a vehicle?
Yeah, there is a residual of $1 on this specific lease. All of our other leases do have a residual also, so we pay the residual, and the vehicle is ours.
Will that require board action in five years, or is it automatic?
No board action. It's not automatic. We still have to do the purchase order, but it will be a purchase order for $1, and I believe there's like a $400 service fee. That's, you know, Enterprise's business method to stay profitable.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by trustee Mailing, a second by trustee Solis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Next, we move on to our information items. The first one, Brown Act Remote Meeting Participation. Superintendent Davis.
Thank you. I just wanted to take an opportunity, they kind of snuck by us, but the governor did change the order with COVID restrictions, and that did end the teleconference abilities we had under 361. So you'll notice that we no longer bring that resolution forward each meeting or every thirty days to acknowledge how board members can participate in a teleconference setting. However, with that end, there is also the beginning of a new assembly bill. And so, in the attachments, you'll see, moving forward, if there's ever an opportunity where the board, trustee needs to be absent from a meeting and still want to participate, you really have two options. The first is the standard board act, or Brown Act, excuse me, option that has always existed and continues. You may be familiar with it. You would notify Anita Lopez at least seventy-two hours in advance. She would identify on the agenda the public location that you're going to participate in, and then we would need to contact and work with you that the agenda be posted at that public location for others to go to. And then you could call in using the, the features that we have with YouTube and participate in the meeting. That continues to remain an option for you. There's also a new assembly bill, AB 2449, that does allow you some flexibility that was available similar to when it was the assembly bill of the past during COVID. In this case, you just would notify either Anita, myself, or President Singh to let us know as early as possible that, under certain conditions, that you might need to participate. And there are two different criterias. There can be an emergency circumstance, so physical or family medical emergency, that means you can attend. You would call and say, got an emergency, I'm not able to attend, but I want to participate by, by our YouTube channel. And there is also a just cause in the assembly bill. If you need to provide childcare or caregiver for, or are the caregiver for a family member, if you have an illness, if you have a need related to a physical or mental disability, or you're traveling on official business of a legislative body or another state or local agency. If any of those applied, you could contact one of us. The seventy-two hours does not, is not required. We don't have to post something on the agenda. But at the front of the agenda, when President Singh is doing attendance, he would identify to the public that you are requesting to teleconference and that meets one of those just cause or emergency criteria. Board would take action on the decision to include, and then at that point, you could teleconference in. So it is still available. It's just a little different in the process. You cannot do that or exercise that right more than four meetings in a calendar year. If you run into a situation, just reach out. Essentially, what we just wanted to make sure you are aware of is, even though AB 361 is gone, should you be in a situation and want to partic, or participate through teleconference, there are ways that you can do that and still be active in the meeting, so. Happy to answer questions or, or entertain those as the opportunity exists where you need to, to exercise that assembly bill.
Any questions or comments from the board? Trustee Kerfond?
Thank you, President Singh. So what constitutes medical emergency? If one of us comes down with the flu or cold, or potentially even COVID-19? Because while the protections are over, there are still people that get infected with COVID-19. Yeah, or is that an option for us to participate remotely?
It is. Under just cause, like having a contagious illness is a reason. So you would just say that that's occurred. You don't have to be in a public place. You, we don't have to post it on the agenda in advance, and, and we can still, once the board takes action, have you participate.
Thank you. And you mentioned via YouTube, is Zoom an option? Or teleconference?
We have a channel set up, so it is, is a link that you would get, and you would do audio in. And it is through Zoom that you do that, and then it's projected out on YouTube.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no other questions, we move on to item number two. Review, receive information regarding annual resolutions. Gilbert Magal.
Hello, Board of Trustees, President Singh, and Superintendent Davis. Before you have the results for a recent survey we did, where we asked our communities, or our community the question, what resolutions should the Board of Trustees recognize? The results are broken down by the top five voted-on resolutions per month, if there were at least five resolutions per that month. You'll see some months only had about three or four, and that's because there were only three or four resolutions to be voted on. Some of our resolutions have an asterisk next to them, meaning that these are resolutions that we already recognize that were voted into that top five. Another thing to note was that the resolutions featured in that survey were, or were or are resolutions that the board already recognizes, as well as the Fresno County Superintendent of Schools and the California Department of Education. Happy to answer any questions.
Sure, trustee, uh, sorry, Superintendent Davis.
Dr. Boatright, if you could also mention how we celebrate the resolutions? I think part of it is identifying the resolutions or the charge of this item was to identify what is our community interest in, in the resolutions that come forward to you as a board, and then I think knowing how do we currently celebrate them might be helpful.
Yes, absolutely. So when the resolutions are approved and signed, then Chris Thompson from my office, she does share those out with the school sites. She also posts them on our district webpage. Our libraries are really the center of activity with resolutions. They put up displays in the library. They share book lists with the teachers and with staff and with the students. They do a number of activities, and then also, school sites, they do their own activities often. They might have a writing activity, or, you know, they're sharing a certain book in the classroom and having a discussion. So there's a lot of different things that are happening at the school sites to recognize the resolutions.
Trustee Kerfond?
Thank you, President Singh. So if, when this item comes back to the board agenda for action, will that, are we approving just every resolution that's on here, or certain ones?
My, my suggestion actually would be for us to, if between now and, and with enough time for our next meeting, if there'd be a desire, I, I would love to serve, but for maybe a subcommittee of two board members to look over that, maybe work with Gilbert, and finalize that for presentation for the.
If there's a subcommittee, I'd be happy to work on that one, too.
So I have a, I have a, well, if there are any other nominations or anyone else that would be interested in serving on that subcommittee? Then I have a motion for, sorry? Oh, it's, it's an information item, so it's just instructions for now? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Gilbert. Nice to see you present. Next, we have information item number three. Receive information regarding extension of child nutrition services contracts. Ms. Engel.
Good evening, Superintendent Davis and Board of Trustees. Tonight, I'm bringing information regarding extension of the 2324 Child Nutrition Service Contracts. Administration is recommending this move forward for action on the May 9th, 23 board meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments, or concerns from the board? Just to maximize the amount of time for reviewing the RFP, I'll, I'll recommend us to return this for action. Thank you. Next, number four. Receive information on district technology equipment for 2023, 2024. Mr. Martinez.
Good evening, Board President Singh, Board members, and Superintendent Davis. This item is coming to you in two parts. First part being a request to refresh our instructional staff computer devices. They're currently a 2019 MacBook model, and they would be replaced with the newest 2023 MacBook model. The old devices would be collected and sold back with a profit coming back to the district to offset some of that cost. The second part of that is the Chromebooks and Chromebook carts for the Justin Garza High School interim portables to prepare for the 2023, 24 school year as well. The administration is recommending this item be placed on the next board agenda for action, and I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions, comments, or concerns from the board? Just related to the amount, then I'll ask for it to come on the next board meeting as an action item.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Next, we turn to letter P, Advanced Planning.
No changes. Calendar is attached.
Thank you. Letter Q, additional information, closing comments from any of the board members or anyone else? Superintendent Davis?
I have just a couple clarifications that were asked from our team. The question that was asked earlier, trustee Sellers, about when the Justin Garza portables will arrive, is actually the first week of June, and that's a big difference, first week to last, so I know Mr. Rodriguez wanted you to know that. And then, I didn't catch it earlier, there was the, a question about the resolution for the Educator Appreciation Week, and Mr. Collegian pointed out there is actually a statement in here recognizing California Teachers Association declaring which day is California Day, the teacher is a part of that resolution, so I'm sorry I didn't see that at first. And that's all.
Next, our next meeting will be here at the Central East High School Performing Arts Center on Tuesday, May 9th, 2023, starting at 6:00 PM for closed session and 7:00 PM for public session. Next, we will adjourn back to closed session. And we thank the members of the public for joining.